The hour of 7:30 PM having arrived in a quorum of voters being present, it is my distinct pleasure to call to order the 2023 Tewksbury Annual Town Meeting. My name is Dustin Weir and I am privileged to serve as town moderator this evening. Let the record show that a properly served and returned warrant is in possession. Please rise for our National Anthem, Pledge of Allegiance, and Moment of Silence. Please welcome Deja Allen, a junior at Connections Academy, to sing our National Anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? Or the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? Or the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, Deja. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, to its republic, which is sacred, one nation, united in the heart of the individual, with liberty and justice for all. Now please join me in a moment of silence respecting the loss over the last year of members of our community. Thank you, please be seated. May I have the Chair of the Select Board, Mr. Todd Johnson, please come to the podium for his announcements for items of interest to the Assembly.
Set on, there we go. So, good evening and welcome. Two quick announcements for you this evening. This Saturday, May 6th, between the times of 9:00 AM and 2:00 PM, we'll be conducting the annual spring cleanup throughout the town of Tewksbury. If you want to participate in that, all are welcome, groups and individuals. You can pick up bags at the town hall and then proceed throughout the community. That same day, there will also be free computer and electronics recycling, paper shredding, and also clothing and textile recycling. Those will all be available at the Public Works Facility, again, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. If you want to get rid of a television, there's a $25 expense for that. The second item I want to mention is a week from Saturday, on May 13th, the Postal Service Carriers Union throughout the United States will be conducting its annual food drive here in the town of Tewksbury. Our local letter carriers will pick up any food that you leave by your mailbox and bring them here to the Tewksbury Community Pantry. In the next week or so, residents will be receiving yellow plastic bags specifically for that purpose, as well as postcards that will be mailed out as a reminder. That's a huge fundraising effort for food supply for the food pantry, and we ask that the community do its best to stock the shelves at 999 Whipple Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Welcome to the Tewksbury Annual Town Meeting. As we begin our meeting, I want to take a moment to talk about the ground rules. Town meeting is a legislative body for our community where we work together to debate the merits of the articles within the warrant before you. Please take a moment to refer to the glossary of terms at the back of your warrant. Because Tewksbury has an open town meeting, each registered voter in Tewksbury is eligible to act on fiscal issues, zoning changes, bylaw amendments, and other matters affecting the town. Voters must wear their voting ribbon conspicuously in order to be counted during standing votes. Please ensure that it is on your person, not on your jacket. This meeting is being recorded. As we move through the articles, presenters or sponsors of the articles will be allowed to speak first before I open the floor to debate. A voter desiring to speak should approach the microphone, await recognition by me, and identify yourself when recognized by name and address for the record. I ask members of the boards to do the same. Each speaker is allowed up to five minutes to speak on an article. Please speak clearly into the microphone so the body can hear you. I will let you know when you have 30 seconds left on your time by tapping the podium. When you hear the tapping, this is your signal to wrap up your remarks. Speakers can disagree with any official, with any other voter, volunteer, or any board. We have a strong tradition in Tewksbury of maintaining a respectful dialogue during town meeting. I will do everything I can to ensure that each speaker has shown respect and that your questions are answered. I ask that all participants kindly do the same. Residents refusing to conduct themselves in a manner befitting this body will be asked to cede the floor and potentially escorted from the meeting. I hope I don't have to enforce that rule. Let's work together to address the issues we have before this body fairly inefficiently. I will accept a motion to move the question, however, I reserve the right to make sure we have had some dialogue about the motion. All questions on the floor are to be directed to the moderator. If you are amending an article, you must present it to the town clerk in writing. We will vote on the amendment first. If the amendment passes, it will become part of the main motion and we will discuss it. If the amendment does not pass, then we will go back to the main motion as it is written in the warrant. When you came in tonight, you were given the warrant with the articles we will be discussing, along with a handout with the Finance Committee recommendations and supplemental handout from the town manager with detailed explanations for several articles and funds. Scrivener's errors are also noted in that document. At this time, please silence your cellphones and ensure your voter ribbon is showing so that counters can easily see it when we do standing counts. Counters, please go to your sections. Ladies and gentlemen, please take note of the counter for your section. When we do a standing count, it is important that you pay attention to your counter and sit down once counted. Your counter will nod at you when you are counted. Thank you. Do we have anyone in the auditorium who is not a registered voter here in Tewksbury? Go hands. Thank you. Welcome. We welcome you to the town meeting and hope that you enjoy this process. Visitors may attend the meeting and only sit in the reserved-for-visitor section to my right. Media may sit in the visitor's section or at the press table. For all of you that attend faithfully, I thank you for your continued presence this evening and your commitment to an involvement in this community. Sitting up here are the various boards for the town with elected and appointed members, including the Select Board, Town Council, the Planning Board, the Board of Health, Department Heads, the Finance Committee, School Committee, Library Trustees, and the Shawshin Technical Schools Committee, and the Housing Authority. Please allow me to introduce the Chairman of the Finance Committee, Robert Kosmerski. Mr. Kosmerski, will you make the first motion? We'll make the first motion on every article unless the Finance Committee is deferring to another board. Mr. Kosmerski, may I hear a motion to waive the reading of the warrant articles?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to waive the reading of the warrant articles.
Thank you. All those in favor of waiving the reading of the warrant articles, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Non-voters are not allowed to address the meeting without prior consent. Typically, we hear from non-voters who are employees, volunteers, or advisors to the town. Mr. Kosmerski, may I have a motion to permit the following persons to address the meeting: non-voter-appointed members of any town or regional school committees or task forces, non-voter employees of the town of Tewksbury, including the Tewksbury Public Schools and Town Council.
Mr. Moderator, I move to allow certain anticipated non-residents to speak on issues, including Assistant Town Manager Steve Sett. Hello. Assistant Town Manager Steve Sadwick, Fire Chief Joe Kearns, School Business Manager David Libby, DPW Superintendent Kevin Hardeman, Town Engineer Andrew Stack, Town Council Kevin Feeley, and others, some of whom may be asked to answer resident questions.
Taking a voice vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, the motion carries. Please also note how difficult it is sometimes to get that microphone to pick you up, so when you speak, please get your mouth really close to the microphone. If there are any other non-voters with us tonight, they may speak upon further motion and consent of the meeting. If you are a visitor to town meeting and would like to speak on an article during the debate, please come to the microphone, introduce yourself with your name and address, and I will hold a brief vote before you begin. Please note tonight's agenda covers Articles 1 through 30, as well as the Consent Calendar Articles 3-31 through 3-34. The zoning amendments are scheduled for Wednesday's Annual Town Meeting to be held this Wednesday, May 3rd, at 7:30 PM. The zoning bylaw articles are numbered 35, 36, and 37, starting on page 28 of your warrant. Please join us on Wednesday for those items. Okay, Section 1, Article 1. The annual town election was held on April 1st, 2023. 797 voters representing 3.3% of registered voters cast ballots in the election. Elected this year were Patrick Holland to the Select Board, Caitlin M. Anderson to the School Committee, Jonathan T. Chiampa and Nicholas James Lizotte to the Planning Board, Caitlin Bugdew Gwilt to the Board of Health, Jessica Rosseo and Kathy Dwyer to the Board of Library Trustees, Ryan M. Lloyd to the Housing Authority, and Dustin T. Weir to town moderator. Since these town officers were chosen during the election, the town meeting does not vote on Article 1. Moving on to Article 2, Mr. Kosmerski, may I have the first motion on the articles?
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 2.
Article 2, do I see anyone? I'm sorry. Yeah. Uh, yes. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Bonnie Page, 25 Hood Road. I'd like to amend Article 2 and add, I move that the members of the Board of Trustees for the Tewksbury Library receive a stipend of $2,500 per year.
Okay, do you have the amendment in writing?
Yes, I do.
May you see? One moment, please. Thank you. The amendment says, states, "I move that the members of the Board of Trustees for the library receive a stipend of $2,500 per year." And I have a second by Julie Naughton on the amendment to Article 2. So now we'll move to debate on the amendment itself. I assume this is going to add a line to the table on Article 2 to add the Tewksbury, the members of the Board of Trustees for the Tewksbury Library in the amount of $2,500 a year. Any other additions?
Yes, I just wanted to speak to it. I just wanted to bring it in line with the other elected members of the city, town.
Thank you. I see somebody rising to debate the amendment only.
Anne Hagstrom, 125 Livingston. I just have a question. How many board members are there? Six. Six. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Would you mind? Thank you.
There are six board members.
Thank you.
I see any other others rising to debate the amendment to Article 2? Okay. We will move to the vote. We'll start with the voice vote. All those in favor of adding the board of, the members of the Board of Trustees for the Tewksbury Library at the amount of $2,500 per year, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I'm going to move to a standing count at this time. All those in favor of adopting the amendment to Article 2 for the members of the Board of Trustees for the Tewksbury Library in the amount of $2,500 per year, please stand and be counted at this time. All those in favor of the amendment. When your counter makes eye contact and points at you, then you may be seated, please. But please remain standing and attentive until that happens. Okay. All those opposed to the amendment for the members of the Board of Trustees for the Tewksbury Library in the amount of $2,500 to Article 2, please stand and be counted at this time. With a vote of 32 to 39, the amendment fails. We will now return to debating Article 2 of your warrant. Do I see any other voters wishing to speak on Article 2? Seeing none? We're going to do a voice vote? Yes, sir.
Hi, Tom Lynch, 104 Ballsom Place. Should these people be making more money than is listed here? Does anyone want to speak to this? I know this isn't like a open-ended conversation, but are these amounts too low?
I'd be happy to invite anybody in particular who's interested in answering. Yes, sir. Town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is something we looked at last year. We did a survey of other communities in this past October. We actually raised the salaries, so I think at the level they're at, we're okay.
Okay, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no one else rise? Move to a voice vote on Article 2. All those in favor of adopting Article 2 as written in your warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article is adopted. This brings us to Article 4, the consent, uh, excuse me. This brings us to the four articles on the consent calendar. I will call out the numbers of the articles one by one. If any voter objects to any particular article being included in the consent calendar, they should say the word "hold" when the number is called. The article is then removed from the consent calendar and restored to its original numbered place in the warrant. After calling the individual items, I will hold a vote on all remaining items as a unit. Again, if you wish to debate any of the particular articles on the consent calendar, that's Article 3, please say the word "hold" when I call out the title, the number. Article 3-31. Article 3-32. Article 3-33. Article 3-33, I hear a "hold." And Article 3-34. I hear no holds on 3-34. Article 3-33 will be moved to the original section of the warrant, and we are now going to discuss the consent calendar 3-31, 3-32, and 3-34. Mr. Kosmerski.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 3-31, 3-32, and 3-34.
Thank you. Hear any debate on the general consent calendar? I assume not. All those in favor of adopting the consent calendar Articles 3-31, 3-32, and 3-34, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? See the consent calendar vote is unanimous. Article 4.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 4, raise and appropriate $134,105,395 for the purpose of the article.
Thank you, Mr. Kosmerski. Article 4 on page 8 of your warrant contains our proposed annual budget. For expediency, debate, I will read the titles of each section in order. If anyone wishes to debate the contents of a particular section, please reply "debate" when the title is read. We will then debate the sections in order. When the debate on all sections is concluded, we will proceed with amendments and vote on Article 4. Again, if you wish to debate any particular section, please say the word "debate" as I read them. On pages 8 and 9, General Government. Finance Department on page 9 and 10. Community Services on page 10. Council on Aging, page 11. Facilities. Library on page 11. Planning and Development, pages 11, 12. Page 12, Public Safety. School Departments on page 13. Department of Public Works, pages 13 and 14. Unclassified, page 15. I heard no calls for debate on Article 4. Do I see anyone rise for amendments? Seeing none. Article 4, all those in favor of adopting Article 4, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to Article 4, please say no. Hearing none, the vote is unanimous. Article 4 is adopted. Article 5. Mr. Kosmerski.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 5, raise and appropriate $7,109,644 for the purpose of the article.
Do I see any debate, anyone rising for debate on Article 5? Seeing none? Yes, ma'am.
Anne Hagstrom, 125 Livingston Street. I'm seeing, I'm seeing quite a bit of an increase in the sewer costs from Lowell Sewer, and I know that Tewksbury already, our water bills are already pretty much out of control, and sewer is part of that. I'm just wondering if we can explain why the sewer rate's increasing almost $350,000.
Mr. Manager.
In regard to the Sewer Enterprise Fund, it's a combination of a couple of things. The actual operating budget itself is seeing an increase mainly in areas such as utilities, supplies, and maintenance of the system. We do have 47 or 48 pump stations we need to maintain, but Lowell Sewer did have a large increase this year, and that's based on the amount of flow that we send to the plant. And then it's, that percentage is allocated towards the budget for the Lowell Wastewater Treatment Plant. And similar to our waste, to our water plant, the Lowell Wastewater Plant is seeing increases in chemicals, supplies, utilities, and just general operation of the plant. So, so the basic reason for their increase is similar to what we see throughout our budget is the cost of doing business for running the plant has just increased more than in previous years.
Thank you. One more question, if you don't mind. Is the stormwater part of what is contributing to our output or throughput to them?
So, for us, our stormwater is separate. We're a separate enterprise, rather than a separate system, but Lowell does have a combined wastewater and stormwater system that does impact their flow. How much it does, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other debate on Article 5? Seeing none? All those in favor of adopting Article 5, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article is adopted unanimously. Mr. Kosmerski.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 6, raise and appropriate $8,182,480 for the purpose of the article.
Article 6. Do I see anyone rising for debate? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article 6, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article passes unanimously. Article passes unanimously. Mr. Kosmursky.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article Seven, raise and appropriate $611,200 for the purpose of the article.
Do I see any debate on Article Seven? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article Seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article Seven is adopted unanimously. Mr. Kosmursky.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article Eight, raise and appropriate $406,380 for the purpose of the article.
Do I see any debate on Article Eight? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article Eight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article Eight is adopted unanimously. Mr. Kosmursky.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article Nine, transfer $1,937,505 from the Stabilization Fund for the purpose of the article.
Thank you. Do I see anyone rising for debate on Article Nine? Seeing none? Article Nine requires a two-thirds vote for adoption. To get an accurate count, I will hold the standing count in reverse order. All those opposed to Article Nine, please stand at this time. All those in favor of Article Nine, please rise at this time. Thank you. Article Nine is adopted unanimously. Article Ten, Mr. Kosmursky.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article Ten, transfer $495,000 from the sewer retained earnings for the purpose of the article.
Do I see any debate on Article Ten? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article Ten, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Say no. Article Ten is adopted unanimously. Mr. Kosmursky.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article Eleven, transfer $320,000 from water retained earnings for the purpose of the article.
Do I see anyone rising to debate Article Eleven? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Laura Kaplan, 11 La Nacaro. I'm not debating the article, I'm just a little confused. I was hoping for a little education, because Article Nine, Ten, Eleven, they're all pretty similar wording, so why is it we had to have separate articles for the similarities that exist as listed? I just wanted a little education, if I could, on that. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
We need to have separate articles, because each article takes money out of different funds to pay for the specific items in the article.
But they're all going to the same department, correct?
So the reason why you see the same pieces of equipment is because they're being cost shared by each of those funds, so the General Fund, the Enterprise Fund for Sewer, the Enterprise Fund for Water are all sharing that particular piece of equipment, so we're taking money out of each of those separate funds and need to vote separately to do that.
Okay, so like, for example, pardon my ignorance, tell me anything if you're indulgent, so like the rubber-wheeled excavator?
Excavator.
We need three of them.
No, that's one piece of equipment, but the way it's being paid for is being cost shared between the General Fund, the Water Enterprise Fund, and the Sewer Enterprise Fund, because the vehicle will be used by each of those divisions.
Okay, I understand. So it's one item being shared amongst three accounts?
Three accounts.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any other debate on Article Eleven? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article Eleven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article Eleven is adopted unanimously. Mr. Kosmursky.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article Twelve, raise and appropriate $505,000 from Stormwater Enterprise Fund for the purpose of the article. For the purpose of the article.
Thank you. Sorry about the microphone. There is a scribbler's error in the executive summary of Article Twelve. If you care to look at your supplemental handout, the wording for that is about the fourth paragraph down on that. The words "retain the earnings" are struck, and the word "fees" is added in its place. That's also, that's just for the executive summary, that's not for the main article. Any debate on Article Twelve? Please rise. Seeing none? All those in favor of adopting Article Twelve, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article Twelve is adopted unanimously. Mr. Kosmursky.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article Thirteen, transfer $200,000 from cable retained earnings for the purpose of the article.
Article Thirteen. Anyone for debate on Article Thirteen, please rise. Seeing none? All those in favor of adopting Article Thirteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article Thirteen is adopted unanimously. Article Fourteen, Mr. Kosmursky.
Okay, bear with me on this one. The Finance Committee moves that the town hereby appropriates the sum of $2,100,000 for the cost of installing and replacing water lines in the town, and for the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet the appropriation, the town treasure with the approval of the Select Board, it's hereby authorized to borrow said sum pursuant to Chapter Forty-four, Section Eight, parentheses five of the Massachusetts General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Very good, thank you. Anyone for debate on Article Fourteen? Please rise at this time. Seeing none? Article Fourteen requires two-thirds vote for adoption. To get an accurate count, I will hold a standing count in reverse order again. All those opposed to Article Fourteen, please stand at this time. All those in favor of adoption of Article Fourteen, please stand at this time. Would the counters please count the votes, the yes votes for this article? With seventy-four yes votes, the motion on Article Fourteen is adopted unanimously. Article Fifteen, Mr. Kosmursky.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article Fifteen, transfer $40,644 from bond premiums for the purpose of the article.
Do I see anyone rising for debate on Article Fifteen? Seeing none? All those in favor of adopting Article Fifteen, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Say no. Article Fifteen is adopted unanimously. Article Sixteen. Mr. Kosmursky.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article Sixteen, appropriate $455,000 from Community Preservation Fund Undesignated Reserve for the purpose of the article.
Do I see anyone rising for debate on Article Sixteen? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article Sixteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article Sixteen is adopted unanimously. Article Seventeen, Mr. Kosmursky.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article Seventeen, appropriate $30,000 from Community Preservation Fund Undesignated Reserve for the purpose of the article.
Thank you. Do I see any debate? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article Seventeen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The article is adopted not unanimously. Thank you. Article Eighteen, Mr. Kosmursky.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article Eighteen, appropriate $80,000 from Community Preservation Fund Undesignated Reserve for the purpose of the article. For the purpose of the article.
Article Eighteen. Do I see anyone for debate on Article Eighteen? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Laura Kaplan, 11 La Nacaro. I was asked to ask this question, someone couldn't be present, but the appropriation of $80,000, isn't that building used now for storage, or is there a future purpose that requires us to maintain that building? Understanding it isn't really habitable by humans right now.
Manager.
So the building was used for storage, but lately it's really just been vacant, unused, not used for storage either. We've been working to determine the use of the building. We're currently working with the Historic Commission, the Board of Selectmen, and staff to determine the best use of the building, to bring a project with renovation costs forward to town meeting, hopefully within the next year. Currently, we're thinking general community use, used by the schools, some historic use to commemorate the one-room schoolhouse, but nothing has been decided at this point. But before we do anything, we want to get the hazardous material removed or remediated, because we may have an opportunity to get volunteers to go in and make some repairs, make some upgrades, and before we do that, we want to make sure that the building is free of any hazardous materials.
So the $80,000 is just a particular remediation, and in the future, will be decided upon whether that building will be utilized?
Correct. Correct. We'll come back with a possible larger project in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan. Any other debate on Article Eighteen? Seeing none? All those in favor of adoption of Article Eighteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The article passes not unanimously. Article Nineteen, Mr. Kosmursky, please.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article Nineteen, appropriate $92,741 from Community Preservation Fund Undesignated Reserve for the purpose of the article.
Do I see anyone rise to debate Article Nineteen? Seeing none? All those in favor of adopting Article Nineteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article Nineteen is adopted unanimously. Article Twenty, Mr. Kosmursky.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article Twenty.
Do I see anyone rising to debate Article Twenty? Seeing none? All those in favor of adopting Article Twenty, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article Twenty is adopted unanimously. Article Twenty-One.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article Twenty-One.
Do I see anyone rising to debate Article Twenty-One? Seeing none? All those in favor of adoption of Article Twenty-One, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article Twenty-One is adopted unanimously. Article Twenty-Two, Mr. Kosmursky.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article Twenty-Two.
Do I see any debate on Article Twenty-Two? Please rise. Seeing none? All those in favor of adoption of Article Twenty-Two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article Twenty-Two is adopted unanimously. Article Twenty-Three, Mr. Kosmursky.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article Twenty-Three.
Do I see any debate on Article Twenty-Three? Seeing none? All those in favor of adoption of Article Twenty-Three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article Twenty-Three is adopted unanimously. Excuse me for one moment. We're making good time. Thank you. Okay. Would the sponsor of Article Twenty-Four, please care to address the microphone?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would move that Article Twenty-Four be withdrawn.
Article Twenty-Four, motion to withdraw by the article sponsor, it's not debatable. We're gonna go right to a voice vote. So, the vote at hand is to withdraw Article Twenty-Four. All those in favor of withdrawing Article Twenty-Four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to withdrawing Article Twenty-Four, please say no. The motion to withdraw Article Twenty-Four is adopted not unanimously. Article Twenty-Five, Mr. Kosmursky.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article Twenty-Five.
Article Twenty-Five. Do I see anyone rising to debate Article Twenty-Five? Seeing none? All those in favor of adoption of Article Twenty-Five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article Twenty-Five is adopted unanimously. Article 25 is adopted unanimously. Article 26, Mr. Kozmerski.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 26.
On Article 26, do I see anyone rising for debate on Article 26? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption of Article 26, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article 26 is adopted unanimously. Article 27, would the article sponsor care to address the meeting, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator, the Select Board moves to withdraw this article.
Motion on the floor is to withdraw Article 27. The motion is not debatable, we will move right to a voice vote. Again, Article 27, the motion to withdraw Article 27. All those in favor of withdrawing Article 27, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion to withdraw Article 27 is, passes unanimously. Article 28, would the, Article 28 is a citizen's position, would the petitioner care to address the meeting or make any motions? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Richard Cuco, 73 Emerald Court, make a motion to table this item until Wednesday evening. The, um, street acceptances require a seven-day notice, and as, to the best of my knowledge, today is only the sixth day, so we request to withdraw, uh, to table it until the Wednesday meeting, which will put us past the seven-day notification period.
Okay, thank you. The motion is to table Article 28 until Wednesday's town meeting, reconvening of, of annual town meeting on, at 7:30 PM on Wednesday, May 3rd. All those in favor of postponing debate on Article 28 until this Wednesday, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion to postpone Article 28 passes unanimously. Postpone until Wednesday, May 3rd at 7:30. Article 29. Article 29 is also a citizen's position, would the petitioner care to address the meeting or make any motions, yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, I'm here on behalf of Nancy O'Connor, same situation for this article, that the notice would be on the sixth day today, so we're asking to continue this, table this until the Wednesday meeting, thank you.
Just one more time, get your name and address, please. Sir, just one more time, get your name and address for the record.
Yes, Richard Cuco, 73, Emerald Court.
Thank you, Mr. Cuco.
Thank you.
Same motion as in Article 28, to postpone Article 29 till reconvening of annual town meeting at 7:30 PM on Wednesday, May 3rd. All those in favor of postponement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion to postpone Article 29, to table Article 29 until the reconvening of town meeting passes. Article 30. Article 30 is a citizen's petition as well. Would the petitioner care to address the meeting or make any motions? Not seeing the petitioner rise, would anyone in meeting care to make any motions regarding Article 30?
Good evening, Keith Sullivan, 67 Dewey Street. With all due respect to the petitioners, as elected officials, they represent what we, as community members, want in our leaders. I think it would be completely inappropriate for-
Mr. Sullivan, if I, if I could interrupt you for one second, before we could begin debate on the article itself, we actually have to have a motion to adopt, adopt said article, similar to what Mr. Kozmerski's been doing. So, unless we hear a motion to adopt Article 30 after a moment, we will just move on. Or any other motion regarding it.
Bill Chapman, 100 Hassel Street, I move to adopt Article 30.
Mr. Chapman moves to adopt Article 30. Sorry, was that Bill Chapman?
Uh, yes.
Bill Chapman. Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you. Getting back to, um, it takes tremendous courage to get up here and run for office as someone who's previously done that, um, I certainly understand that. As I go back with respect to the petitioner's limitation of chairs, I think we're doing a disservice to the people that are individually elected. I'll just take the school committee that I served on, five different people, I don't think anyone is in a better position to decide for themselves who could best serve as chair, which is basically just running meetings, doesn't mean you're in charge of the other members, just means that you're there to run the meetings, and whether it's the school committee, the planning board, the select board, library trustee, the many boards that we have, I think it would just be a disservice to our residents to allow this petition to limit if we have really good people that necessarily, the committee members, their colleagues think are best to run the meetings, so I rise in opposition to that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. All right, so, see anyone else rising to debate Article 30?
Got a question?
Sir.
Tom Lynch, 104 Balsam Place, my question is, how often do these chairs get selected on the committees, is it basically annual? I'm getting a nod from one gentleman, I'm assuming he knows what to talk about, I trust you. You can speak officially.
Yep, no, thank you, annually, each of the committees reorganize and elect a new chairman, or the current chairman may be re-elected to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or points of debate on Article 30? All those in favor of adoption of Article 30, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed to Article 30, please signify by saying no.
No.
The article fails not unanimously. Okay. That brings us back around to the consent calendar articles, 3-31. Go to my notes, excuse me. 3-31, 3-32, and 3-34 were already adopted previously as part of the consent calendar. Do I hear any motions regarding Article 3-33?
Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 3-33.
Thank you, Mr. Kozmerski. Article 3-33. Yes, ma'am.
Laura Kaplan, Levene, Lanacaro, I wondered if I could ask the town manager how much funds were allotted to our great community of Tewksbury for the Chapter 90 funds, and also how much of that was put aside for installation of sidewalks? Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, the town receives approximately $890,000 in Chapter 90 money, and this, and for sidewalks, we use $70,000 for a current project on Fisk Street, and in the future, we'll be using $100,000 to design future sidewalk projects that will be undertaken.
And for Shawshing, first of all, thank you so much for very much enjoying the sidewalks that have been installed there, and just a question, last town meeting I asked if it, if it was going to be both sides of Shawshing, do you know if that's still in progress? Because I don't see it on both sides of Shawshing.
I believe it's one side and it alternates at different locations.
But will it be on both sides?
No, it's gonna, the way it's, it's completed, there won't be any further work on Shawshing.
Because I did bring that up at the last town meeting, and you had said both sides, so that's changed?
Yeah, I, I don't remember exactly what was discussed, but the plan, as far as I recall, was one side of the street, but at different locations alternated.
Will that change in the future, was it a reason for that not being on both sides? Like, is there some Eastman issues with the railroad?
No, I think the original plan obviously was the one side, was, was one side.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan. Any other debate on Article 3-33? Seeing none.
Anne Hexton, 125 Leavenes, I noticed that we are still continuing to work on Main Street, and that you are adding sidewalks along there as well, are the sidewalks that are being added to 38 part of the state update, or is that for the Tewksbury funds?
That is a state funded project, we're not using Chapter 90 on that.
Including sidewalks?
Including the sidewalks.
Thank you. Any other debate on 3-33? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 3-33, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article 3-33 is adopted unanimously. Okay. This concludes the agenda for tonight, the zoning articles are scheduled for the continuation of this meeting on Wednesday, May 3rd at 7:30 PM. This includes Articles 28, 29, 35, 36, and 37. The special town meeting will be held on Wednesday, May 3rd at 7 o'clock. The continuation of this annual town meeting is at 7:30. Mr. Kozmerski, may I have a motion to recess until 7:30 PM, Wednesday, May 3rd?
Mr. Moderator, I move to recess annual town meeting until Wednesday, May 3rd, 2023 at 7:30 PM.
The special town meeting, which is a separate meeting, independent of this one, is 7 o'clock. The continuation of this meeting starts at 7:30. If we finish the special town meeting early, we will have to wait until 7:30. So this meeting, the motion on the table, is to adjourn this meeting until 7:30 PM. Please, I invite everyone, encourage everyone who's going to be in the neighborhood on Wednesday to stop by at 7 o'clock for the special town meeting. All those in favor of adjourning until 7:30 PM on Wednesday, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you very much, see you on Wednesday.